All right. Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, April 25th, 2023, meeting of the Town of Kennebunk Select Board. We are now going to call the meeting to order, and I'm just going to stall for a second until Courtney gets here, and then we will start the Pledge of Allegiance. Here we go. She's already standing up. Here we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We will go ahead and start with the consideration and approval of minutes, and this is for the regular meeting of April 11th, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April 11th, 2023.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous, 6-0-1. All right, and we have items to be signed tonight, I believe. We'll pass those around. And moving right along, then we will go to public hearings. Starting off, item A is the municipal officers of the Town of Kennebunk will hold a public hearing to act on the following: An application from Kport Bagel LLC doing business as Kport Bagel for a Vittler license located at 2 Morning Lane Cottage Number 6. Do we have any notes from the town? Martin, you seem to have a note.
Yes. I don't see that any of the applicants are present, so all of these are, I'm asking you to approve them contingent upon final approval from the code office.
Okay. Great. And that's the only notes we have on any of these? Okay. Well, that being the case, then I would take a motion.
All right. I will make a motion to approve the Vittler license for Kport Bagel LLC doing business as Kport Bagel contingent upon final approval from code enforcement.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Okay. Anything from the public? Okay, then 6-0-1. Item B, the municipal officers of the Town of Kennebunk will hold a public hearing to act on the following: Applications from Martin and Vanessa McCarthy doing business as KBK Protein Place for a Vittler license located at 57 Portland Road, formerly Wishbones. And same note for there. Does anyone, any comments from the public? Okay. Comments from the board? All right, then I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the Vittler license for Martin and Vanessa McCarthy doing business as KBK Protein Place contingent upon final approval from code enforcement.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? All right, 6-0-2.
Uh-uh.
Nope, that's what I was asking from the public. And then item C, municipal officers for the Town of Kennebunk holding a public hearing to act on the following: Applications from Suzanne Lilis doing business as White Sales, New Owner, White Sales Inn, New Owner, for a Vittler license and a lodging house license located at 61 Fletcher Street. And do we have anyone here who wants to make a comment on that? Now, anything from the board?
I just know that, you know, we worked with Armin last year, and he sold, so new owner coming in in the next month.
And this is again would be contingent on code, final approval. Okay. Well, then I guess another, another motion.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the Vittler and lodging house licenses for Suzanne Lilis doing business as White Sales Inn contingent upon final approval from code enforcement.
And I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? All right, 6-0-1. Okay, moving to item five, public comments. Anyone here have a comment they would like to make from the public tonight? Anybody online? Going once, twice. Okay, so if no public comments tonight, then we will move to acknowledgements and announcements. So there's some recent staff changes, and we talked about this at our last meeting, but officially, we have as resignations Police Officer Caitlin Sawyer, eight and a half years with the town, and for the police K-9 Auto, four years with Officer Sawyer and the town. Yes?
I missed a public comment.
Why don't you just step up and do both then?
Double header. John Costin, resident of Dean Street. How about I take them in reverse order? First, would like to thank Officer Sawyer and Officer Otto for their service. Otto gets a little pat on the head and a biscuit. But I believe this was the Town of Kennebunk's first K-9 officer, and Chief McKenzie's not here. I'm wondering whether Officer Sawyer has put together some notes on how the program went. In particular, I'd be interested in what was accomplished by, by use of this K-9 officer. Don't know if we'll ever try it again, but I know, you know, there wasn't unanimous support for having K-9 officer. I was one of the skeptics myself. I'd really like to know how it turned out and, and what the payoff was. Okay, so heading back to public comment, I apologize for being asleep at the switch. So I came tonight to talk about something that I had hoped to see on your agenda and did not, and no, it has nothing to do with my exit, nothing to do with me at all. I would like to talk about the giant historic landmark-sized hole on Route 1 North. It's official, semi-official, that the developers of the Barnard Tavern have walked away from it. It's been printed in the newspaper. They're putting it up on their Facebook page. So they're saying it themselves. And it's a huge loss to the town. I would call it disastrous that a very important historic landmark has been destroyed and now will not be rebuilt. Of course, you know, fingers are pointing in all directions on this. I think there's plenty of blame to go around, and the developers don't hold public meetings and take public comment. I really think that it would behoove the town to do a little postmortem on this and figure out what went wrong and what might have been done to prevent this. In my personal view, there were red flags all over this from the beginning. And like I said, there's plenty of blame to go around, but I would like to think that the Town of Kennebunk has some agency to prevent something like this in the future. Couple of questions that popped to my mind is why the waiving of the deed restriction got placed on the ballot by board action, by board fiat, without requiring the collection of signatures? You know, perhaps the developers would have easily collected the 200-plus signatures to get this on the ballot, but we didn't even find out. It would have started the discussion rolling, and I do think that when the board places things on the ballot without requiring a petition process, it does signify some level of endorsement. This board doesn't place just anything on the ballot. I haven't seen the board, you know, say, "Well, let's let the voters decide whether we should loosen everybody's lug nuts or release poisonous snakes in the park." You know, it's up to them. Like, there's a pre-screening process. That didn't happen. I would have thought that when someone says, "Hey, we're going to tear down a historic structure and promise to rebuild it," that perhaps we would have required some kind of completion bond. To my knowledge, that was never discussed. Maybe it was. Wasn't that advice followed if it was discussed? If it wasn't discussed, why wasn't it discussed? If this was run by the town's attorney, I would have thought that's one place that some expertise would have popped up its head and said like, "Hey, what are you guys doing for a safety net on this?" But, you know, I could go on. Hopefully, you all will come up with your own questions. I wouldn't think that the point of such an exercise is to decide who's to blame. I wouldn't think that the point would be to come up with a list of all the things that could have been done, but to prevent something like that happening again, because that building's not going to be rebuilt. That property has been completely cleansed of the historic structure and any requirements to rebuild a historic structure on it, on a valuable piece of Route 1 land. Are we going to get an auto dealership? Are we going to get high-end development? We don't know, but we're not getting that building back. Things like this, exactly like this, might not happen, but the general theme of people come in and say, "Hey, we want you to grant us exceptions from requirements and the way things are usually done, and we promise to return something to the town," those kinds of situations will recur. I think that if we don't, as a town government, kind of figure out, "How exactly did that happen?" The chances that it will happen again are reasonably high. So I take, I hope that this board will take the initiative to do a little examination into that. I don't know whether it has to be public or not. If it doesn't, you all would feel more comfortable doing it in private. You would almost have my blessing on that, a great champion of public meetings, but just so it gets done. And thank you for taking my comments out of order.
Thank you. Thank you, John. And sorry, I should have been a little, I guess, a little more, a little louder or something with my notification of public comments. But to, you know, I could certainly respond to some of those points you made, but the bigger picture of reviewing the process that went down and how that went forward to make sure that doesn't happen again, I think is a very, a very good one. And so, the specifics we'll get to. Yeah, go right ahead. One second. Let's just see if there's any additional public comment. I don't think there was, but just to make sure. Okay. Can we just hold that to the, to the end? Or, I think that might be, just to carry, carry forward, and then we'll maybe do that at public comments. Okay. Time-sensitive business and staff presentations. Item A, discuss boards, okay, discuss boards, committees, and commissions. So next up is appointment consideration to the Kennebunk River Committee, and the membership on this committee is shared by the towns of Kennebunk and Kennebunk Port. Kennebunk is looking to appoint two regular and one alternate member. The town advertised the vacancy and held an introduction to the Kennebunk River Committee Forum on April 18th. This event offered interested residents an opportunity to, one, learn about the functions of the committee and expectations of new members, to ask questions, and to meet the harbor master, committee chair, and town manager. The following residents attended the forum and have been invited to this meeting to discuss their interest in joining the Kennebunk River Committee: Jack Danahue, Deanna Ennis, and apologize if I mess up your names, Leanne Travers, David Pratt, Michael Green, Jeffrey Merrill, and Everett Osterman. And so I would invite anyone who I just named and wants to talk to us and describe their interest in the committee to step forward, and then we can just take you in whatever order you come up and just introduce yourself and your interest in the, little background and your interest in the committee, if you're interested in doing so, not a requirement.
And before they do that, I'm just going to recuse myself, since my husband is one of the applicants.
Thanks, Lisa. Yeah?
Just have a process question.
Sure.
We're going to hear all of them, and then?
Yes.
Thank you.
Could you just, I'm sorry, just push the button at the base of the mic? That one. Yep, go ahead.
All right. My name's David Pratt, and my family and I get a lot of use out of the river. We really enjoy it. We're boaters. We fish. My son sails out of the Rundle Yacht Club. I was just looking for a way to give back and protect this resource. That's about it.
Great. Thank you, David. Anyone else? Here we go.
Learning from David. I just pressed the button. Hi, my name's Deanna. I appreciate all your work on the town committee. I live in Kennebunk, off of 99. I have a little extra time and was looking to give back to the community. Really passionate about natural resources and how to protect it, and do that with equality to all.
Great. Thank you so much.
Leanne Travers?
There you go.
I'm Leanne Travers. I was raised in Kennebunk. I've played by that river. I've worked by that river for most of my life, and I'm in my retirement back working along the river. I've worked at the Breakwater Hotel, the Arendelle, starting when I was 16 and 17, and then I picked up when I came back to retire and live in the family house. And I see that river every day I go to work, and I just cherish it and realize what a jewel it is and what an economic driver it is to our town, and how important it is to both towns, homeowners, businesspeople, tourists. We wouldn't have a tourist industry down there the way we do without that river. So I really feel passionate about participating and trying to keep the quality that we've had for so many years down there as is, and improve if possible.
Great. Thank you so much. And this time, it's already on, so you don't have to push it. I'm just going to get ahead of the game here.
My name is Everett Osterman. I live on a tributary of the river, and so I'm daily looking at it and seeing what's going on. And I would like to have some input and help with the committee to keep that river as good and clean as we can. That's it.
And it's still on, so you're good to go.
Luckily. I'm Mike Green. I'm an outdoors person. I live in the town. I'm just looking for a way to give back.
Anybody else? Okay, I think Bob DeZillo is here as the chair. Okay, there you go. I knew you were out there. If you'd like to step up and just share your thoughts on where we are with the committee and anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah. I'm Bob Danzlo. I'm acting chair of the river committee, and of course, we need people. It's wonderful to see how many people we have that are willing to volunteer for our town in whatever service and committees, you know, that are out there that need, need volunteers. So it's great to see people come up and, and turn out like they did for our little meeting the other night. I just have a couple of recommendations, only because my criteria on, on the board is basically, we're looking for people that have a kind of a vested interest in the river. I run Regosa, which is the tour boat behind the Nonanthum. Rich Woodman ran the Eleanor. You know, for instance, some of the other people, Canupi Newkirk, he's a lobsterman. So these guys have a vested interest, and the people that we're looking for are people that have a connection to the river in one way, shape, or form. I think anybody here could probably do, do the job. But I do have two personal recommendations. Jeffrey Merrill, who I guess is, is not here tonight for some reason, but he was a, he was a personal choice of mine, and I asked him to be on the river committee. So that's, that's one of my recommendations. And of course, Leanne Travers came to me, recommended by numerous people. So I kind of feel strongly about those people. That's just my personal recommendation. As far as the alternate is concerned, any of the guys that fish on the river, they sound, they sound good to me, you know, because they do have a vested interest in it. That's, that's how I feel about it, but I just thought I'd put my two cents in. And that's about it. But thanks for your service.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for that. I guess the only other thing I was going to ask was, the, do we have, in terms of balance of people on the committee that are, that are currently on the committee, you know, I think, I think everything you've said makes sense. There's some of the people here tonight, we're talking about living on the, on the river, and just from, from that perspective, are there people on the committee currently who, who maybe live on the river but are not business owners, and seeing it from that, or users of the river but not necessarily business owners on the river?
We have people that have, have property on the river, things, things like that. Almost all of the people on the committee right now are, are those types of people. We're still missing a couple of people on the port side.
Okay.
So that's, and we have some people that have, have done their term and have been on it a long, long time and have finally kind of retired. So
Got it.
We just came into this time where we just happen to be light on the river committee, and we'd like to get it back on track and, and active again.
Okay.
And that's really all I've got to say.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thanks for hearing me.
All right. Well, then I would open this to board discussion before we move to nominations. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say, it's really exciting to see so many people sign up, and to encourage anyone who doesn't get chosen to be on the committee to please attend meetings and participate anyway. They're all open to the public, and your input would be welcome in any case.
Yeah, I want to, do want to reinforce that point. It's 100% true. I mean, it's true of any committee, but I think, given the interest and, I mean, I know there's been, it's sort of an embarrassment of riches here in that we've, you know, had, been short on this committee for some time, and suddenly there's, you know, there's a lot of interest. I think it's great that we were able to get this word out about this the way we did. And, and as, as Miriam said, we, you know, on the, all of the, if you're, if you're interested or have a thoughts or opinions or input on, on the river management, conservation, rules, any of those things, you know, this committee is a great place to start, to get things to, if it comes easier, can be handled there or come to the board, this board level or whatever, then, you know, that's, that's a great forum to be able to make a difference, regardless of whether you're on the committee or attending the committee meetings. So, yeah, I appreciate all your interests, and I hope you keep, carry on with it. And if you're not selected for this, or if you are, we have other committee vacancies as well that also have to do with town business and conservation and work. So, you know, please take a look at that as well. So, okay. With that said, any specific discussions? Bill, and then back to Miriam.
Are you, are you ready to take nominations at this point, or are you just looking for general discussion?
There's more discussion before, more discussion before nominations, and then we'll go ahead.
All right. So I guess.
Wait, wait. So wait one second. You just said you don't have anything else for?
No, not that's, that's okay.
Okay. Then I'll take, I guess we'll start with one, one nomination then, Bill.
Do you have something to say first?
Not in particular. I mean, except for the fact that this was a, it's, it's a tough choice. You do have, you do have some very qualified people, given, given the criteria that was mentioned.
Right.
You've got, you've got some very qualified people here. So I'm going to, I'm going to start with David Pratt.
Okay.
I like his, I like his organizational background, and I like, you know, his science background, and I think he'd be, I think he'd be a good choice. I guess what we're trying to do is go right now for the full, for the full positions and then do the alternate after. Is that what you're going to do, or?
I think we'll take them one by one, starting with the regular members.
All right.
So do you want?
So if we go, if you go ahead and make, I guess, what I'm going to do is if you want to make a motion, raise your hand, and then, okay. So yeah, you said that, and then you'll have, you'll make the second motion.
So why don't we start with Bill?
Okay.
Okay. Make a motion for David Pratt to be on the, as a regular member on the river committee, with the term expiring on June 30th, 2024.
Okay, we'll second and then go to discussion. So if anyone has a second for that, then we'll do that, and then we'll go to discussion before we move on. If you have questions about process, okay, so let's pause this for a second. We'll get, we have to get a second, and then we can have a discussion point. Yeah. Any second for, for that?
Well, I'll second.
Okay. So moved and seconded, we're now this discussion. So Leslie, we maybe went into this faster than, than you're thinking, or?
Yeah, and maybe I'm a little slow tonight, which is entirely possible.
We can, we can pause or whatever to do, to hear this out.
So I'm just curious, does it make sense to motion, second, and vote, motion, second, and vote? Or does it make some, more sense to have people put their motions out, their nominations out first?
It's not, unfortunately, how we can, this is the, the challenge we run into with the way that
I know, and I just think it can be different.
What we can, what we can do, and that's why I was talking about discussion. If you want to just have an open discussion before we make, or now we can pause this and carry this open discussion, then carry it forward about it, then we do need to make the, the motions and, in this, in this way. We can certainly have a discussion about, about what reasons you want to, you would, you would appoint one versus, yeah, we'll get, yeah. Sure, let's, let's do that. But we do eventually have to get to this process that we go through to appoint people on the committee, but we can talk about it first. Yes, Martin.
Yeah, I'd just like to remind the board that you're not nominating, because that's from an election.
I know, wrong, wrong word.
You're appointing.
Right.
You're appointing people to a committee, not nominating.
Right. And so, so if you, if you want to talk, thank you, Martin. That was more concise version of what I was trying to say. We can have a discussion about who we want, who we think would be a good fit for the committee and why, and then make these motions. But we do have to make the motions this way to appoint a person versus nominate them. So we can't just do a whole bunch of like votes on a nomination and then get, get down to it that way or do ranking. It's just like, this is how it has to be. But we can have that discussion before we start. So let's just do that right now. We have a motion on the floor, and that's on seconded, but this is a discussion period.
So I was just wondering if we could start by maybe eliminating a couple of people that, like, either we don't feel are fit or that didn't, aren't here, that we haven't had comment on, or people that, you know, if there's anyone here that we think, like, "I don't know anything about Jack other than what I read on his application. Jack's not present. He didn't speak for himself." I think someone who's here is qualified. For me, my discussion is just like, okay, maybe Jack's not at this time. Then I can at least get it down to like the four who are, five who are present and, or, you know, whatever. And then we discuss that way. I guess I'm just saying, like, if there's general discussion of the people who are not present, not being part of the conversation, it kind of whittles us down. It's not as, do you get what I'm saying?
I do. I tend to just, in distant from a personal standpoint, that I've put a little bit less weight on that, because things can come up. People have family emergencies, other things come up. They could be a great fit for the committee and be a great public servant, but can't make it tonight for reasons out of their control. I don't necessarily assume that they didn't care about the meeting and don't show up.
Yeah, no, I guess I'm not referencing it that way, but the people that I'm saying that I'm personally considering are all the ones that are present.
Okay, well, that's fair. Why don't we start, go that direction and say, like, talk about the people that you are considering for reasons that, for the reasons that you, because I think that's what we need to hear. That's the discussion we want to have, is like, these are who I think would be good. This, we heard, we heard some recommendations from, from Bob, who's been on the committee for a long time, you know, and is the chair. That's important. And then we have our own preferences as well. So I think let's, let's start there. So Courtney, since you've got the mic, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah. All right. So I felt like Deanna is, you know, clearly mentioned that she's looking to just get involved in something and give back, is passionate for the river, but because we have openings on other committees that I think she could translate some of that desire to give back and also kind of aligns with what her interest is, it sounds to me like, you know, David, Michael, and Everett have, you know, river, they're on the river, they work on the river, they have river experience. To me, that would be kind of the direction I would go. But, you know, obviously, Leanne has been involved in, you know, town committees forever, knows how they all cross over, knows a lot of people, and is involved in a lot of things, has, you know, historically does all these things. She grew up on this river, so Leanne would be my number one right away. And then David, Michael, and Everett would sort of have been, you know, my next pick, I guess. But listening to the chair reference Jeffrey Merrill, like you said, but I'm just not a fan of that approach. I didn't receive an email from this person other than the application. I'm very much a who's here, and that's just my personal preference. So I would say, for me, it would be Leanne, David, and probably Michael. And then I would highly recommend that Deanna apply for a position on one of the other conservation committees that has space, because she has a desire to give back, but it doesn't seem like an overwhelming desire for just that one thing. That would just be my, my preference. But again,
Okay.
I'm game for the, for any. I feel like anyone who wants to give back to this town and volunteer, I'm all for it. So.
Great. Yeah, Miriam.
So I'm kind of inclined to take Bob, is it? Bob's recommendations as the, as the head of the committee, committee, and someone who's familiar with all these people. So I'm kind of leaning toward Leanne and Jeffrey and Michael, who you mentioned.
Okay. All right. Any thoughts? Yeah, go ahead.
I was going to say the same, that I think we should, I think it would behoove us to listen to the chair of the committee for his recommendations. So I think, you know, my, one of my, at least a starting point would probably be Leanne and Jeffrey if it's recommended by Bob. Thank you.
And Bill?
Yeah, I mean, Jeffrey, Jeffrey was recommended by the chair of the committee. I certainly, I certainly see him as an excellent, as an excellent second choice. And one of the things that the chair did say was he talked about people that live on the, on the river. And I, and I believe if I'm not mistaken, Everett lives on the river. So I would, so I'm thinking, so I guess if I were to put my three, my, my, if I were to do my top three, I'd go David, Jeffrey, and Everett. That's, that's me. But everybody's got their own top three.
Okay. So, and then I'm, I'm in alignment with Miriam with what you said. I take your point, Courtney. I just, I have a different perspective on people being here, being particularly relevant. I mean, I think it's really nice to hear from people, but, you know, their application is mostly what we were going on. And so I would say, again, that the recommendations are important, not the final say, obviously, but I think that's, that's useful to do, to note. And I think having balance of people who are business owners and users of the river in that way, in a commercial sense, and people in that way, in a commercial sense, and people living on the river who see it every day, people who are in town, it's all of our resource that's shared by everyone in town, so I don't think it's a requirement that you look out the window and see the river to be on this committee, you know? But I do think it's important that you have a connection and that you're gonna be there and, you know, have an interest in it. So, I think, again, Jeffrey and Leann would be great choices for the, for the alternate committee member. You know, I think we, I think anyone would be an excellent choice. They don't really have a bad, bad option here. That said, it does make a little bit of a difference. It's not a huge difference if you're a regular member, alternate member for voting, it's all, all important members, so. We do have a motion on the floor for, for David Pratt right now. You want to carry this forward to a vote at this point? I don't think any reason to withdraw it. Courtney, before we go ahead and vote, you want to say anything else?
Nope, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. All right, well, we need to carry forward that. Let's, let's move and seconded for David Pratt. If there's any further discussion beforehand, do we want to hear from anything else from members of the public before we go ahead and vote on this initial nomination? Oh, not nomination, appointment, sorry. Now I screwed it up. I know, I'm gonna fix this, you guys. All right, let's go ahead then. All, for the, for the appointment of David Pratt, all those in favor? Three opposed? One. Miriam, you didn't vote either way?
No.
You gotta vote! All right. Okay. So, that's, that's one. Then David Pratt is appointed. Congratulations, David, as a regular member. And, all right, we'll take a nomination for the, another regular member. Yeah?
So, I would like to appoint Leann Travers for the second regular member position.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? So, I'm just gonna say that I'm actually gonna vote no on this, because I think Leann, I would, I'd like to put Jeffrey in this case in because of the information I heard from, from Bob and the application. I'd like to have him as the regular member, it's a minor difference, and I would like to appoint Leann as the alternate member. So, that's why I would, that preference I would have, but if it goes this way, that's, that's totally fine. I would, I would nominate Leann for the next one, so that's all. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, that's 3-2. So, Leann, congratulations, you're a second regular member. And then I'll take a nomination for the alternate member.
I'll nominate, I'll nominate, I'll nominate Jeffrey as the, Jeffrey Merrill as the alternate member.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, any additional discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right, so that's 5-0-2 for Jeffrey Merrill as the alternate member. Yes, okay, you got it, okay. All right, congratulations, Jeffrey. And then again, I would encourage all of you, it's a little bit chaotic the way we have to do this, I, there's many, many better ways that we could, we could do this voting on these, on these things. Unfortunately, this is the way we're required to do it by the state and by process, so hopefully this initial discussion made it a little better than it could have been, but it's, it's always challenging when there's more than, more people, it's a good problem to have, but it's a challenging process that we're required to follow.
I just wanted to just one, say one last thing, and that is, again, to all those people that applied.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it was, there's no easy choice here.
No. No, and, and we very much appreciate you.
And any one of you, Leann, would have been, you know, would have, would have been a second, a second choice of mine easily, but.
She was, she was on there.
She, she wanted, became second choice. I'm just saying that just because, just because you weren't voted for doesn't mean that you were any less qualified than any of the others or any, or any less, you know?
Yeah.
It's just, we had two few slots and too many people.
Yeah, and so we appreciate you coming out, and I think the, hopefully, again, you'll participate and be involved in the committee. There may be additional options that open up, and like I said, we have a lot of openings on committees right now, and we really want you to be part of our process and part of the, part of the team working on these, on these town committees. Yes.
If I could just, I'll let the people who were appointed tonight, you can come in anytime, afternoon time tomorrow to be sworn into office.
Gets real serious after that. Okay, again, and thank you all again, I appreciate it. We'll, we're gonna move on to item B now, following, accepting donations. We're gonna accept the following donations for $25 from Joan M. Gordon for Kinnibunk Fire Rescue in memory of Richard V. Bibber, $200 from Brookings Smith for Kinnibunk Fire Rescue in memory of Richard V. Bibber, and $1,000 from Judith A. Page and Phyllis Metcalf for the Emergency Fuel Assistance Fund. And I will take a motion for that.
I will make a motion to accept the donations and send letters thanking them for their generosity.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay. And before I move on, you did, we were able to record the different votes we had on the, the nominations. I know that's a challenge sometimes doing it remotely for doing, for when we have, for the minutes, if I didn't do it by roll call.
Yes, I, I think we've got it, and we'll confirm when we watch the minutes.
Perfect, okay, all right. I had said I would do it by roll call, there wasn't any unanimous, and I didn't do that, so, all right, that's fine. All right, moving on to new business. Item A is to discuss the dedication of the 2022 Annual Town Report. Each year, the town honors individuals who have passed away by recognizing their service to the community as former or current town committee members, volunteers, or employees. The individuals listed below have served the community in various capacities. Kent C. Burdine, Kinnibunk Police Department Corporal. Janice H. Buffum, ballot clerk. John V. Klisch, Kinnibunk Fire Rescue Member. Richard W. Haley, Kinnibunk Recycling Center employee and volunteer. Linda J. Lyman, Conservation Commission Member, Dog Advisory Committee Member, Volunteer Water Quality Monitor at Kinnibunk's Rivers and Beaches. Brian R. McBride, Sr., volunteer for many years organizing Kinnibunk's Memorial Day parade. Ralph L. Smith, Jr., Site Plan Review Board Member. William S. Walker, Kinnibunk Police Department Reserve Officer, Parks and Recreation Department Teen Center Employee, volunteer and coach for numerous school and recreation sports and activities, school crossing guard for 26 years. John S. White, Conservation Commission Member, Volunteer Water Quality Monitor at Kinnibunk's Rivers and Beaches.
Make a motion to dedicate the 2022 Annual Town Report to those listed above.
I'm gonna second that.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor? All right. Then I will, moving on to discuss any other business of the board. Miriam, did you have, you had a question earlier for Chris, did you want to ask that?
I forgot about it. Do we have, are there rules in place for what can be built on a, on a site in a historic district? Or does it only refer to the buildings already there?
That is an excellent question. So, our ordinance regulates the historic district, which is overlay district under Article 12, and that involves everything from paving, landscaping, tree removal, building construction alterations, it's very broad. So, one of the challenges is, and I'm sure John makes an excellent point, if we were to review that, we don't distinguish between doing something minor and something extremely major. And sometimes people go into that who haven't gone through it before, and it, it can be burdensome for everybody involved, and I think there's a lot to learn from this process about that. I know the HPC is conducting workshops, looking at amendments to that, so Legos pointed out, we have an old ordinance, how it applies to some of these things. There's, there's certainly a lot of commentary that's necessary and appropriate, and I think that's just the point that's critical, is what can you do? Well, you can do anything, it's what you need approval for, which is everything. So, that's hard.
Good question, Chris. Without delving into, without getting into a depth, depth, in-depth thing at this point, but what, that, that property now, is that still considered, now that the building's gone, is it still considered historic preservation, or?
It's still located within the historic overlay district, okay? The structure is what was kind of considered the contributing element, meaning the actual old building, the barn not so much. Each property gets viewed differently. Sometimes you have contributing properties, sometimes you have contributing structures, so ultimately, within the historic district, depending what the proposal is, the board may look at it different ways. So, it doesn't relieve itself from any of those standards, it's just certain ones may apply differently.
Final follow-up.
Yep.
So, if somebody were to want to come through tomorrow and build something on that property, would they be, would they be, would their decision, or would their approvals be guided by the building that was there before?
Possibly, but generally only in a favorable manner. And what I mean by that is the building that existed before was non-conforming towards setbacks. So, although the building that was removed, it is, they are eligible to retain it in its prior location if the nonconformity has not lapsed over a three-year period. So, there could be some advantages to rebuilding in its current location. You may look at those very prominent large trees in front. If you were to try to move to accommodate the setbacks, that repositioning could put those at risk, so you would otherwise have to meet today's standards in terms of the current code. There are other things that come into play, uses have to be met, so some real positives are, is the owners of property had navigated a rezoning of that property and increased the number of uses available to it. So, while the efforts of it might not feel real positive to some, certainly the opportunities exist in a real positive way.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I was just wondering, when does the three years start as far as the setbacks?
That would start from the date of the demolition of the building, which I think we're less than a year into that, so there's plenty of time to get through that.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
You're welcome.
All right, any other business?
I, actually, I did have, I don't know if this would be considered business. I'm gonna, I guess, just wait for my comments.
We'll move to subcommittee reports then, unless if it's part of that?
No, it's not part of that. It's just a, an individual from the community that stopped by my house with a complaint, and I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention because it was important enough for them to come to my home.
I would bring it up under, under member comments, though, if it's not listed under it.
Sure.
We'll do that, okay.
Perfect.
So, we'll start with subcommittee reports then. And we've met before the last meeting, right, for the ordinance subcommittee, right, so we haven't had anything since then. And so, we, board liaison, board liaison reports then, unless there's another subcommittee that, so we'll start with.
Go ahead, Bill.
I just, you know, I've sent them all out to you guys. The LPC had a very busy meeting, as you probably gather from all the material I've sent you. And we're gonna have another very busy meeting, it looks like, coming up on the 20th. There will be some bills that we may have to vote on in between there, but that's, that's the, that's, that's where we are right now. Some of those, I wanted, I wanted to pay particular attention to some of the housing bills that I sent you. Please read those, that some of the, some of the things that are coming through the legislature are very concerning, so.
Okay, Miriam.
Last night, I attended a school board meeting, and they spent some time talking about their re, their current project to rewrite their, what you might call it, hold Strategic plan, sorry. It was on this paper somewhere, but I wrote so many things on it, I couldn't find it. And one of the things they talked about was the fact that they wanted to make sure that their strategic plan wasn't completed and then put on a shelf and left there. And so, this started ringing bells for me. And one of the things they discussed was that they were gonna write into their strategic plan were steps to be taken and that they would be evaluated regularly. And they said that there, anytime there was something on their agenda that was linked to their strategic plan, it would be noted. So, it was kind of keeping it alive and, and upfront, so people would be looking at it. So, when I ran for this office, one of the things I thought was important was that we do the same thing with our comp plan. It's always seemed like it's on the shelf, I know it isn't, but, and I wanted to see us as a board look at it and make an action plan for, for things that we thought were important. And I really liked the idea of linking those action plans to agenda items, so I just wanted to share that, because I thought it was kind of a, a very good idea.
I like that, that's a great, that's a great point. Thanks for making that connection.
And in that vein, we also have CDAP, which has gone to the shelf.
Well, yeah, but I mean, having the comp plan recently completed, certainly a good thing to make sure we're including that, and then we've also talked about doing more strategic planning as a result of the comp plan to focus that a little more, so, but certainly as a starting point, that's a great idea. Other board liaison reports? Yes, Lisa.
So, the Climate Action Plan Task Force met, and we are going, going to be launching a survey. It's gonna go live on Friday, I believe, the 28th, and so we'll be getting it out, there'll be paper copies around town, at the library, the town hall, and at Cummings Market. Cummings Market has agreed to be sort of our West K connection, which I'm super grateful for, and then it'll also be online, and we'll put it on social media and things. And so, it's about what people want or are interested in or are concerned about with climate action. And I just wanted to speak to Miriam that we do reference the comp plan quite a bit in our talks, which I'm excited about and I think is very relevant. And so, everyone stay tuned for the survey, five minutes, super quick, it's just about what's important to you as far as climate, and I think it's gonna be out for about a month.
Great. Thanks, Lisa. And Merton?
The meeting last week of the Charter Commission, we worked, they worked again on the recall provision, which is moving along and seems to be, maybe the discussion part might be finished up tomorrow night. Also having Nathan Poor, who was the town manager in Kinnibunk Port, but now is the manager in, and for several years, in Falmouth. He's coming to talk about form of government. He's currently with the council, and he was in the port, and lives in the port with a town manager, select board forum. So, I think that they may actually start form of government maybe tomorrow night. If not, that's probably gonna be on the agenda for the meeting after that.
Okay. Thanks, thanks, Merton. And we'll go back to individual select board member comments, and I'm gonna start with you, Courtney.
All right, so I've had, since I've been on the board, maybe three of these inquiries about, like, just, I guess, how would you say, curb appeal of houses is like one tier of people's kind of complaints, how do I handle this, you know, hoarding-looking yard in my neighborhood, what can you do about that? And then the second tier of like how it's impacting their health and wellness at their home, and then the third being like, I have a rat infestation now from a home that's been vacant in my neighborhood and no one lives there for X amount of time. Those are the three different inquiries that have happened. The first two, it seems to me like there's really nothing that, or at least the first one, it sort of seems like there's nothing you can really do about that, other than, I don't know, hire a lawyer.
Ordinances that some accounts have, but yeah.
So, you know, I guess these emails keep coming, and I, I guess I just wanted to bring it up, because the one that just came to my home was the last of the three about a rat infestation in their home now due to a vacant property next door to them that is decrepit and rundown and has not had anyone in it for several years, apparently. I do know where this home is, I can concur that that is probably a fact, but I guess I'm just wondering, what can we do about this? How can I respond to said resident? Where do I direct them? I don't want to send them to Chris or Brian, who would usually deal with that stuff, like, what can we do?
That's actually a specific duty of the health officer.
Okay. So, the health officer is where we would send this person, but in a more general conversation, I think about the conversation that we started last year with looking at short-term rentals, looking at our lack of housing, kind of where we're headed with that. And then I kind of think of some of these emails that have come in, one of them has come in three times, and I've said the same thing, like, I don't know Brown Street, I don't know what to say. But then I think about our need, and I think, are we really doing enough to find a way to acquire some of these properties, or really dig into them enough to see if there's an opportunity for us to, you know, maybe no one is living there, or whoever, you know, would have inherited said home, or whatever the situation is, I don't know, but if there are homes sitting vacant in the town, what process are we taking as a town to really go and look and see if there's opportunities that exist here, where a developer might come in and clean up said home and have some affordable housing right here? We don't need to look for land, we don't need to look for, you know, these big pieces of an acreage, maybe it already exists, and, you know, you look at like what Sanford's done, if you just drive through Sanford right now, you look at their main drag there, they have, with that big money they got last year from the government, they have acquired a lot of those homes that were, you know, tax-whatever-owned, yeah, acquired, and they've completely flipped them, and now they're pine tree properties and becoming affordable housing. I just feel like with this conversation coming up, the longer we wait, the more people are getting angry, thinking we're doing nothing, but also, we're hitting our heads against the wall of what can we do, and to me, it seems that there's a very obtainable opportunity right in front of us. So, I just want to bring that back up again publicly to the board, that I want to do something with this and not just say we are, but know that these opportunities do exist, and make sure that we continue to kind of push those things forward. So, this guy showing up at my house reminded me that we have so much right here, I, I just, I hope that we can find a way to work through some of that and, you know, maybe convert it.
You have a question on that?
Thanks, Courtney, yeah, Bill?
Just a quick question for Chris, and he may know, if, if such a property were, exists, and it, it presents a danger, such as rats, infestation, and that sort of thing, and we can have provable danger, I don't know whether rats are actually living, but in either case, is there, is there, are there mechanisms within being able to condemn the property, especially if nobody, if we don't actually have an active owner, and let's say the bank owns it?
There are several different legal processes to go through, part of it, you can do what's called, so what Martin references and what you're talking about, the health officer can post a building for unhealthful conditions, generally when you post a building like that, it's unfit for habitation, it's not a condemnation of it. So, essentially, you may be identifying a deficiency and then having somebody rectify that situation. There are limited powers the health officer has in that arena. When you post a dangerous building, that's essentially saying it's not, it's at risk for failure, and it's at jeopardy for the public, and you as essentially are securing the premises and then saying it can't remain in that state. Ultimately, that's a legal process, when you go through the legal process, there's notification that goes through that, the owner has a right to try to make repairs to it, it's generally very time-consuming. Once the town embarks down that process, it's very hard to retreat from it, and generally what happens is you try to give the owner every avenue possible to restore that property. When you do have a vacant property, you have to try to chase down who those owners are, I know we do have some in town where that is a bit of a problem, and we've worked with legal on that, so it's not always as easy as it seems. And generally, what we do, first thing we do is identify what that deficiency is and isolate it and try to deal with that specifically. If you have an issue with that, like rats, health officer can immediately look at that, generally there's something where you have a property that's in disrepair, we at times will actually step in, I hate to say that, look to our community partners to step in and clean up a premises, remove what's causing that. That's not always directly the town, there's other individuals who do that, we will reach out to our partners when we have those circumstances. It's not always that easy, though, because people do have some private property rights, so we don't trample on those too quickly, we try to, I guess, incentivize them to try to move through that process. So, everyone's very different, I guess is what I'm saying.
Do you remember one, do you remember one property down on Route 9, Lower Village?
Yep.
That we, as a town, assisted on with the help of York County Community Action, where somebody in fact was living in it?
Yes.
And it became a health condition?
Very much so.
And they actually, they actually were able to secure the funds to actually rebuild it.
And I think the point you are alluding to is quite often, there's another component to this, there may be a mental health issue that goes into it, that gets beyond our skillset, so we try to be very careful not to solve problems where we end up creating more, so it is complicated, but I certainly think if there's those circumstances, we may not directly solve the problem, we may make some of those connections to do that, so I'd welcome, direct you to the town manager, who knows how to get ahold of us, and we kind of open up our arms and bring people together, so that's, shouldn't be a situation somebody feels helpless in, at least in terms of acknowledging and try to work toward a solution, we can do that.
Thanks, Chris, I just wanted to add to this, so Courtney, I think you raised some really interesting points here, I think it would be worthwhile to have a review in the relatively near future, from, from legal probably, to going over what we do with tax-acquired properties, what some of those avenues are, what the challenge is, and the, the kind of expenses involved in a single property we'd like, with maybe a couple of case examples, and then potentially looking to identify, are there places, are there specific properties in town that maybe would be candidates for what you're talking about? I do think it's a very, as Chris pointed out, a time-consuming and legally-intensive process to do even one place, but there may be opportunities that are on the, on the board, so I think we should do both of those, like, let's review what we actually can do and what our powers are as a board, what the pitfalls are, and then maybe if there's any opportunities. Makes sense for?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. Bill, did you have anything else for individual board member comments, or Courtney, did you, were you finished?
I'm good, thank you.
Just again, to thank all the people that work in our town government, especially those on the second floor, and, and, as well as our fire, rescue, and highway personnel. I can't thank everybody enough, who do, who are the hard-working people that help keep this town running on a day-to-day basis.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Miriam, do you have anything, or do you raise your hand, I guess, if you do? Okay.
So, was it last week, I believe, I was appointed to the York County Budget Board? Yay. And I just wanted people to know, it's too late for this year.
You wish for.
I know. It's too late for this year, but there, each district in York County has five, or, there's five districts in York County, and each district has three seats. And I was really disappointed to see that most districts only have one or two seats filled. You know, there's been a lot of talk about budget, town budget, school budget, but I think that people out there need to think about York County budget as well, there is, there are seats for members of the public to participate in the York County budget, and it's just something I wanted to point out for people, our district, District 2, has two seats filled, so the public seat is open, but at this point, it's too late to fill it, since our work has already started, but just something for people to consider next year, to participate in the budget process, I think it's gonna be pretty interesting. And just so people know, like, York County, their ARPA funds that they received was $40 million, that's more than our, like, total budget. So, we're dealing with some big numbers, and it affects a lot of people, so I just wanted to point that out, but other than that, thanks for a good meeting.
Thanks, Lisa. The only thing I wanted to say tonight was, there've been a number of comments coming in, and I expect there to be quite a lot more, as we get closer to the June meeting on the, on the budget, as, as we're proposing and presenting it. People are seeing the 23% number and seeing some sticker shock, and I just invite anybody to come and have the conversations with us about that, especially at the public hearings on the budget, but more specifically, the, all of our meetings we had on the budget are online and available to, to review and see, and I encourage you to not just look at the number, but go through and look at the decisions we made at each step along the way and how we arrived there. One of the, a couple of the biggest things to remember, that we're operating in a, you know, seven-plus percent inflation environment, so there's already that as a starting point, and then the people in the town of Kennybunk authorized a salary study to look at whether we're really taking care appropriately, compensating the people that work in the town, and we came forward and found out we were not, and we needed to correct that, and that is a very important and valuable move that we made to, to change that, and I 100% stand by the decisions we made, so invite further conversation with anybody who wants to talk about it, come talk about us here, come talk to me, and we'll have that, but I think we did, we're doing what's difficult but necessary to move it forward.
Yeah, and I would just add, we're, I'm working with Kayla, we're gonna try to put some bullet points together specifically about, because there's a lot of different percentages out there, and so, just to be clear about what, what applies, some graphs and some things like that, so you just have, have the basic facts and information, so I'm gonna, hopefully I'll get that out this week.
Thank you, Heather, I appreciate that.
Along those lines, just a, just a brief recommendation, that is, so that people can actually see in the way that it impacts them specifically, so if you've got a 100, 200, $300,000 house, what does that number look like? So, in other words, it's great to say, it's great to run off and, and, you know, run off with exaggerated, in some cases, percentages that I'm seeing, which, in either case, let's see what the actual numbers look like, if, if past, what does this mean based on our current assumptions of mill rate? I realize that we don't know what the valuations look like, that we will be seeing in August, when all that, when all that is finalized, but based on our current assumptions, what does it look like?
Perfect.
To that point, too, just because you brought it up, Shiloh, I think it's phenomenal to bring up, I just was telling someone at Community Outreach this last week, that in 18 months, 20 months now, being on the board, I've never received an email about the budget and people complaining, like, really, ever. The emails I've received typically have been people who just moved here asking if it is quarterly or if it's annual, literally, and, like, when they receive their bill. And Miriam and I discussed this point, that, you know, it's very seldom that there is this much conversation, truthfully, I mean, one or two people compared to the population is so minimal. Your point is 100% spot-on, and the only other piece I would say, Heather, and, and I stand by it 100% as well, I would also take the burden of any of those emails or calls willingly, but also in addition to some of the points I would make, is, you know, things like what Brian mentioned about the salt, like, showing on their bullet points a price difference of a salt from last year to this year, did you know that we use X amount of salt annually, or that we fielded X amount of complaints about lack of salt, but this is how much we bought, and, you know, or just, do you know how many shifts the fire department worked understaffed last year? Do you know, like, pick out some of the points that, like, Chief McKenzie said, did you know that we had X amount of police force in 2008 and what we have now? Just little things like that, I think, are such a gut punch that people are still gonna be upset, because that's the nature of our world, but I think it's very hard to argue when you see things multiple times like that, so those would be some of the things I'd think of.
Yeah, I will just say, you know, we're, we're probably more from, less advocacy, more, so it'll probably just be, so this is what we paid last year for this, this is what we're, we're projecting for, for the, for the next budget cycle, so you can see that percentage increase.
Yeah, doesn't need to be advocacy, but certainly just facts, statistics, and...
Absolutely, absolutely, yep.
And, and just to clarify, what I believe Bill was saying is, is that you can give examples, if your house is worth $300,000, your bill will go up by this amount, just to make it easy.
Yeah, Joel had provided some of that during the conversation, when we had that during budget, so we can, we can go back and provide, provide those numbers, again, recognizing that they are assumptions based on a number of things, and the, the budget's not finalized, and valuations aren't finalized, but there are some best guesses at this point, and, for sure.
And I also think it's important to say, to just get people to think about this, I just answered an email right before I came about the budget, and I point, and the person had asked about raises to the, the town employees, and I said, you know, you have to remember that they're facing cost of living increases, just like everybody else, they have, they're dealing with inflation, and they deserve, you know, a cost of living increase to help them with that. Aside from the, aside from the problem of recruiting and retaining staff, that in itself is something that people just kind of forget about.
Over to you then, Heather.
All right, so, some highlights here, our next Select Board Ordinance Review Subcommittee is May 4th at 10:00 AM, so we'll continue to work on, let's see, what are we working on? We're working on food trucks, we're working on, starting to have some conversation about short-term rentals, and parking is actually May 9th, it's coming to the Select Board, so it will, it's not at the committee anymore, so we'll be bringing that back for first reading, May 9th, and then we've been trying to get that out, so folks have an opportunity to recognize that that's coming, if they want to weigh in with you all around some of those parking changes. May 6th, May Day Festival, events from 8:00 to 3:00 PM, the parade's at 1:30, you can view the information at www.kennybunkmain.us/mayday, so that's exciting. Candidates Night, Martin, are we still?
Working on it.
Okay, so we're, there, the towns clerk is looking to schedule a Candidates Night for candidates running for Select Board, so we have two, and there are two seats, so we are still looking at a tentative date of May 17th at 6:30, so more information to come on that. And then Buy a Brick, we're currently taking orders through June 30th for personalized engraved bricks to be installed this fall at the Waterhouse Center. So, brick order information can be found on our website, and orders received after June 30th will be included in next year's order, so gotta get your info in by the, by June 30th. Want to remind folks, May 9th, we're having executive session at 5:30, and then, yeah, and I think, actually, I think that's it? Any other questions?
No, it's great, I just think we need to start a weather pool for, for May Day, I know we've had everything from like actual snow on May Day, during the May Day Festival, to like 85 degrees, and so there's a pretty big window, I think, like, there's some towns in like Minnesota that do, they like drive the car out on the ice and make, take the bet as to when, when it will fall through the ice, I think May Day weather will have like the percent possibility of snow versus 80 degrees and anywhere in between.
Well, my weather karma is not good, so I'm, I, so, sorry about that.
We've had other days where...
It was really cold last year.
That's right, yeah. I remember having one, one year where we had snow during the parade, and then my kids were climbing in t-shirts on the climbing wall later that day, so it can also change during the day, yeah. All right, well, I think, thank you very much for everything and for a great meeting, everybody, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. I'll second.
Moved and seconded, by Lisa. All those in favor? Okay, we stand adjourned, thanks, everybody.
Shiloh, I mean, Shiloh, listen, yeah, yeah.
So...